Thank you. We're gonna ask that you please stand and the prayer will be led by...
Our Father in Heaven, as we bow in thy presence, we want to thank thee for the many blessings of life. Thank thee for the privilege we have here this evening, and we'd ask the things that we do be in accordance with thy will. We'd ask thy blessings upon each one that are here this evening, and we'd ask thee to forgive us for we failed thee. In Christ's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The mayor will be just a few minutes late tonight, so I was asked to carry on until he arrives. Do I hear...
I move that we accept the minutes as filed.
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Muntz.
McGlothlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Here. There are a couple of items that we're going to hold. Mr. Rogers. Yes, you're gonna get that. Are there a couple of items we're gonna hold until the mayor gets here, but right now we're gonna have correspondence, Ms. Muntz.
All right, sir.
Move that we accept the items 1 through 6 as filed.
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Muntz.
1 through 6 as filed. That was Gibson, McGlothlin.
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
Do we have other?
Yes, sir, we do. We have 7 through 12, sir. You want me to read them?
What is your question? Yes, please.
Number 7 is from T. Richard Smith at the Parks and Recreation Commission as director to Mike Marler. And on behalf of the Parks and Recreation and the city, they thank you for your work done on engineering and surveying at the Babe Ruth Ball Field at no cost to the city.
Accept and file.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Gibson?
Yes.
McGlothlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
I have a communication from Mayor Hayes, and it is a veto message regarding Resolution 4882, which was because of concern for the safety of those traveling on Carey Road as the stop signs were installed against the advice of the Traffic Service Director, Marvin.
Move to override.
Second.
There's some discussion. Mr. Coggins?
Go ahead.
Okay. I think there are several points of view, Mr. Coggins, that we'd like to present. I think Mr. Marvin is here to... They would like to visit with the council pertaining to the advice that he gave the mayor in quiet. And then also, Mr. Kevin Looney. And, sir, you gonna come up with it, or is Mr. Looney gonna be our speaker? Okay.
Mayor requested that we hold this communication until he gets here. He should be here in five minutes.
Okay, we'll hold it.
All right, sir. Have a communication from Betty Jackson, 5105 Glenview Boulevard. And it's regarding a letter that was sent by Mayor Hayes during the campaign and Alderman races.
Accept and file.
Please, please read that, Ms. Muntz.
All right. To Mayor Hayes and City Council from Betty Jackson, 5105 Glenview Boulevard. It was known early before the campaign began that Mayor Hayes was going to put a white person in Ward 2 Alderman race. This was told a council member by the mayor's cousin, Murray Witcher. We also understood another black person was solicited to run in Ward 2 to split the black vote. I am happy to say this did not occur. Then the weird occurrences surrounding a yard sign in Ward 3. The accusation had a ring of untruth, in my opinion. We lost yard signs in the Rose City area of our ward through what we considered concerted efforts by people unknown. We had ideas. Now, the letter sent directly from the mayor on stationery that were shameless, written in an attempt to influence the race in 3rd and 4th Ward for his cousin, Murray Witcher. And the mayor selected Dan Carter. Since those letters seem to have adverse effect, I would think that Martin Gibson is thankful that the mayor didn't write a letter for him. If he had, Ray Hick would be sitting in his seat come January. Let us all be reminded that Alderman, our ward representatives, and they are selected by the people of that ward. The mayor should not use unethical tactics of his office to persuade voters to help build his political machine. And this is signed Betty Jackson and dated today.
Accept and file.
I think I already made that motion.
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Muntz.
Gibson?
Yes.
McGlothlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
Have a communication from Lloyd J. Bear of 917 Shriner Court. And it's regarding the letter sent to the 4th Ward citizens.
Move, accept and file. Second.
Roll call.
Gibson?
Yes.
McGlothlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher? And Spinelli.
Yes.
I have a communication from Amy York. And it's regarding the mayor's letter that was sent to Ward 3.
Move, accept and file.
Second. And Ms. York called me this evening and asked me to have this read on the council floor.
All right.
If you read it, read the whole communication, don't just read part of it.
All right, sir. This letter signed by Amy York has the actual letter that was sent by our mayor Hayes. And so I shall read both pieces of legislation. I was very disappointed to see the attached letter injecting your special interest in our Ward 3 Alderman's race. To any average citizen, your letter looks to be on official stationery with the city's logo. I think you should explain to the public who paid for the mail out. I believe most of the residents of Ward 3 agreed that you and your close political friend, National Night Out Rogers, went a little too far in supporting your choice and candidate for Alderman in our ward. And this is signed by Amy York. And this is a copy of the letter as sent out by the mayor. Dear North Little Rock citizens, for almost six years, I have served as your mayor. I have tried very hard to bring you respectable, honest, hard-working administration. One where true nature of the good people who live here would be proud to lend their strong efforts in supporting this community by making it a place where our children can grow up safely, the way it was throughout my childhood in North Little Rock. I have tried to bring our city together, our citizen groups, the school district, the North Little Rock Housing Authority, our municipal employees, the business community, and all who live and work and visit within our borders. Our city is clearly more progressive, and our progress has caused us to be more respected. On Tuesday, November 8th, you will vote for one of two members representing your ward on the council. Your vote will decide who will be a part of your team to preside over making decisions on the largest municipal budget in the state, well over $100 million. Crime, police, spy on streets, drainage, and other issues deserve a team which works together to seek and find answers for these cornerstones of a good life, of quality. Independent and well-thinking council members working together are essential for finding the answers to our common problems. John Gorman would not be that kind of councilman. Mr. Gorman's recent mail out once again demonstrates how he uses this city as a game board in displaying his twisted style of politics. The truth and welfare of the community are not in the path he follows. Mr. Gorman would try to govern our city through litigation, lawsuits, courts, and conflicts, as shown by his past conduct. Even now, he threatens more of the same. It is up to you to choose a council member to help lead and guide North Little Rock. I hope you make a wise choice. The future of our city is so very important to me that I could not let this election come and go without speaking out. Troubling times can only be made better by working together. John Gorman does not know how to do this. Please be very protective of your vote and use it carefully. Sincerely, Patrick Henry Hayes.
Ms. Muntz, who signed that second letter now? I'm confused here. The second letter, who did? Who signed that one?
I just said Patrick Henry Hayes.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear that. Mayor Hayes did, thank you.
I believe, did I make the motion to accept and file?
I have a motion and a second.
Roll call.
Call. Gibson?
Yes.
McGlothlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
I have a communication from Johnny Pounders to the mayor and Alderman.
Move, accept and file.
Second. And we'd like to go ahead and since on the 3rd Ward, please read that for her.
All right, just a moment, please, sir. Dear Mayor and Alderman, I am an offended citizen of North Little Rock. Last Monday, the day before election, I had brought to me two quite official-looking envelopes from Mayor Patrick Henry Hayes, City of North Little Rock. Each contained a letter that began, "Dear North Little Rock citizens." Obviously, they were form letters because both were identical for the first three paragraphs. But the remainder of the two letters definitely contained two distinct messages. One was to be sent to the 4th Ward and urged voters to vote for his choice, Murray Witcher. The letter was very flattering of his candidate and urges the voters to vote for him. The other letter is definitely an attack on John Gorman, a candidate running in Ward 3. And apparently, he is someone the mayor fears. The attack is so unprecedented that I was shocked. Shocked because I had listened to Mr. Gorman's campaign statements and had become interested in some of the issues he raised, such as substations for the police and his ideas about drainage. I cannot believe that a mayor would so blatantly attempt to stack a city council in his favor. The Alderman are the legislative arm of city government. They are supposed to represent their wards. They should be chosen by the people in those areas after fair and open discussion that are the normal result of elections. There's nothing fair about the way Mayor Hayes attacked Mr. Gorman. How can Gorman, I understand, who does not have the assets available to the mayor, respond to these attacks? This is wrong. From everything I have read, I have ascertained that Mayor Hayes is supporting his own candidate for Ward 3, Dan Carter. It is clear after all the mail that was dumped in the mailboxes throughout the ward, attacking John Gorman, that the mayor does not think his candidate can win in a fair election. That explains the hate mail that was sent out last week by the individuals who make up Ward 3, Citizens for Responsible Government, David Rogers, Boo McDonald, Jim Butler, Joe Brewer, Bubba Earnhardt, and VZ Reed. Because of the mayor's letter, I am definitely voting for John Gorman. He has not attacked his opponent or the mayor for anything personal. He has only discussed his ideas for the future of the ward. But he must have hit a nerve somewhere to have panicked the mayor and his cronies in such a way. And I urge all of the voters of Ward 3 and 4 to make their own independent choices for Alderman in the upcoming runoff election, in spite of this heavy-handed lobbying by the mayor. I had thought that our city had shed dogtown image. This kind of election shenanigans that our mayor has undertaken during this election could bring that terrible image back. Mayor Hayes, please keep out of the ward elections. Let us make our decisions. And this is signed. Sincerely, Johnny L. Pounders of 5704 Shamrock. I have a motion and a second.
Roll call.
Gibson?
Yes.
McGlothlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Bestow?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
That's all the communications, sir, except the veto letter.
Okay, we're holding that. Thank you. I see the mayor approaching, so I will gladly relinquish this chair.
While the mayor takes the seat, I'd like to congratulate two of our Alderman on now being members of the survivors' club.
I want to thank Alderman Skoggins. I apologize for being late. A line of 10 airplanes at St. Louis Airport delayed us. I was supposed to be back with a little bit of time to spare, but I apologize and thank you, Alderman Skoggins, for opening the meeting. I understand that you've gone through communications and that there's a veto letter on the Carey Drive. Is the only remaining communication, is that correct, Ms. Muntz?
Yes, sir, it is.
Ms. Muntz, would you read that veto letter, please?
Yes, sir. To the members of the North Little Rock City Council regarding Resolution 4882, dear council members, I vetoed the referred to legislation because of my concern for the safety of those who travel in the area of Carey Road as the installation of these stop signs were against the advice of the Director of Traffic Services, Tim Marvin. Mr. Marvin will be present during Monday night's council meeting to share with you his concerns. Thanking you in advance for your understanding, I remain sincerely Patrick Henry Hayes, Mayor.
Do I have a motion on that? Well, before I get to motion on the letter, Tim, are you here? Where are you? Would you come to the microphone, please? I know there's some people that live in that neighborhood out there. I had an occasion to go out there Thursday and witness the concerns that they have firsthand and certainly can attest to the problems in slowing traffic along that thoroughfare and have a great deal of sympathy with those concerns. I also vetoed that legislation because of Mr. Marvin's concerns. And I think this is one of those instances where, whether there's no answer that can solve all problems. And I wanted him to be here to express to the council prior to any motions being had. And in addition, to allow the residents of that area to address the council so that we can have as much information at our hands. I sincerely believed in vetoing that legislation, that there would be increased danger in that area. But there may be some other approach that can be taken. And I certainly want to offer the council the same information that I had. Mr. Marvin?
Thank you. The particular intersection was first brought to my attention back in the summertime, early summer. And the location was looked over, and there was, in fact, found to be some speeding problems through there. The conversation and discussion with Mayor Hayes and myself, I had three possible solutions. One, the first of which is always to request selective enforcement through the police department to set up a radar unit in the area. That's the quickest and easiest solution to the problem. Of course, the police department can't be present at all times. And with that in mind, it was discussed that with the '95 budget year that some money would be set aside to install some flashing speed limit signs with a no tolerance plate attached, similar to what's on McCain Boulevard. These run about $7,000 a pair and could be installed, hopefully, by the end of spring in '95. The third thing is what are called rumble strips. I'm sure you all have driven across those as you approach a remote signaled or stop-type intersection on state highway systems out in the rural areas. We do not currently have a piece of equipment that is capable of installing these rumble strips. However, I understand that the street department is working on acquiring one of those, hopefully, again in '95. The specific piece of equipment they're referring to, I think, is called an infrared pavement patching device of some sort. And it would be very easy to adapt that, while that's not its primary purpose. It would be relatively simple to adapt that to the rumble strip installation. Some of the concerns that I have have to do with the average motorist's reaction to approaching a stop sign that is obviously at a location where there is little or no cross-traffic. What this tends to bring about is that the next time the vehicle goes through there, knowing what that situation is as far as the traffic is concerned, they're not as inclined to stop. And this continues to such a point that the stopping does not occur on an adequate basis. Then one day, there is a car on the cross-street, and that motorist that is on the major street that has not been properly stopping proceeds through the intersection and hits that car. Not only does that sort of thing happen, a general contempt for the purpose of stop signs is then brought about in the motors that travel that area. And then, of course, there's the inevitable increase in rear-end type accidents at an intersection of that nature, regardless of whether or not the stop signs may be warranted. Anytime you install stop signs where there is a significant volume of traffic, rear-end type accidents will increase. There are some other considerations, some of which would be that the large volume of traffic that does travel Carey Road out there, relatively large, it's around 3,500 cars per day. With the installation of stop signs, would be brought to a stop, and then the braking noise, the acceleration noise, and so forth that would occur 24 hours a day. This is not a desirable situation. Basically, what it boils down to is that North Little Rock, as are all cities and counties in Arkansas, are required to follow the guidelines in the manual and uniform traffic control devices. None of these intersections in that general area meet those guidelines for the minimum warrants for installation of a multi-way stop. And I've outlined some of those reasons for the minimum warrants as outlined in the manual.
Does any member of the council have any questions of Mr. Marvin? Al, Ms. Spinelli?
I don't have a question. And Tim is an excellent traffic engineer, and I have a lot of faith in his judgment. However, the same arguments that he used tonight, or the same arguments that he used when I wanted to put signs on Osage, and those signs have been there for years, Tim. And to my knowledge, we've not had any problems. Same arguments that were used against the signs on Summers. I realize that stop signs are not the ideal way to slow down the flow of traffic. But sometimes, it's the only way. And I can assure you, they've made a tremendous difference on Osage and Indian Hills, and also on Summers and Lakewood Northeast. You know, for that reason, I'm gonna vote to override the veto.
Alderman Gibson?
Well, you know, Mr. Spinelli, we have a similar situation, only we have school buses that can't get back out on North Hills on North Hills Boulevard, either off of Lakeview or off of Barbara. And we're gonna have to address that, and I hope we will look at that in the same light when we bring it back in.
Any other comments of Mr. Marvin? Mr. Marvin, when I went out there and visited with the residents, and you might want to comment on this, there was some comments that we may have overkilled in regard to the stop signs that were put up. In other words, there were two going in each direction that stopped traffic on Carey going both ways. There were some comments that maybe the biggest concern was the traffic coming over the hill going in an easterly direction in Carey Road. Is there any professional comments that you might make with regard to simply stopping traffic going in an easterly direction rather than both directions?
That would be highly irregular. Motorists have come to expect, and rightfully so, that when they face a stop sign, that the traffic traveling in the opposite direction is going to be also facing a stop sign so that whatever maneuver, aside from the straight-through maneuver they choose to make, that they will have an opportunity to do so.
Any other council member? I know there's some residents here. I don't know if... I think they may have a petition. If so, if there's any one of you that wants to address the council before there's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Kevin Looney, and I am a resident of the area and concern. And I appreciate the opportunity to address the council on this issue. I also want to express our appreciation to Mr. Witcher on his support in this. Well, I don't think there's any disagreement as far as whether or not a problem exists in this area. I think the real issue is how to solve this problem. Mr. Marvin currently has proposed the flashing sign with rumble strips. And the residents of the area are opposed to this for two primary reasons. First and foremost is still the safety concern. We view the flashing sign and rumble strip as really a short-term solution to a long-term problem. No doubt that they will be effective for the first month, the first several months. But a year from now, that hill will still be there, and we fear that people will grow used to the warning signs and not pay any attention to them. Secondly, we have concerns as far as the aesthetic value. Certainly, this is a minor concern compared to the safety. But in this area, certainly, there's no great demand for landscape value having a flashing yellow sign in your neighborhood. Also, what we are proposing is a stop sign. And as really a method of compromise, we're looking at only an eastbound sign for traffic eastbound on Carey Drive. This most certainly will solve the problem. Traffic will come to a stop. It will protect the intersection there at Green Bank and Carey. Mr. Marvin expressed concern that people would run through the stop sign. That was, as I gather, opposition to the stop sign. But that's certainly our opposition to the flashing yellow sign. They'll run through a stop sign, they'll certainly speed through the flashing yellow sign, particularly after it's been there for quite some time. So we are asking that the council override this veto, give us a stop sign for eastbound traffic. This, of course, would be a cost savings to the city also. I believe the cost of the flashing yellow signs and the rumble strip was somewhat over $7,000. A stop sign would be just a few hundred dollars. We have gathered 143 names on a petition, which reads that we want one stop sign for eastbound traffic on Carey Road. The stop sign should be located at Carey and Perrin Roads, and we do not want a flashing yellow light. And I might add that we gathered these signatures primarily on one afternoon. We had a Sunday afternoon that we gathered and went out to the neighborhood and collected these signatures. And we were met with overwhelming support. There's a great deal of concern in the area. And I might add also, this was the Sunday before Election Day, which, you know, having a clipboard on somebody's front porch, we were surprised to even get an open door. But we had a great deal of support. And so at this time, I would want to ask for you to override the mayor's veto on this. And we are basically asking for a neighborhood back. Thank you very much.
Al, and Bestow?
Mr. Moore, leave it. What is the time limit restraint on a veto? How many days does the mayor have to veto a legislation?
It's five working days. It may be six. I can check that for you in just a moment.
Well, the reason I ask is, we passed that legislation on October the 24th, and that was 18 days prior to the date of the letter of veto.
Let me help out, Alderman Bestow. The veto itself and the letter are two different things. The letter has to be filed by the next council meeting in order to have the veto legal. The veto itself does not have to be done, except within, in my understanding, five days within the passage of the legislation. The date of the letter doesn't have anything to do with the... Except by the next council meeting.
Just want a clarification on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments? Let me indicate, too. I want to very much compliment the residents out there. I know that...
I know that when I vetoed the legislation and it was certainly out of my concern for everyone's safety out there and I wanted the council to be fully aware of what concerns had been expressed to me prior to making a decision, that I did have an opportunity to call back a number of the residents out there and they were very cordial. They, after listening to me, understood my concerns and did so, I think, in a very...in a way that I very much appreciate. And so I just wanted to share with you that I do and I recognize sometimes when I do things that people don't approve of, I don't always get cordial treatment, but I can say in every instance, the neighbors in that area certainly understood why I did what I did. And rest assured, as I indicated when I was out there Thursday, I have absolutely no problem respecting the wishes of the council after the vote. With that, I'll ask for a motion.
Mayor, I would move to override. Also, Mr. Looney, can you get your folks to stand up?
Yes.
That you have with you?
I second that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and second to override the mayor's veto. Any other discussion on the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
McGloughlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
No.
Thomas?
No.
Gaines?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Muns. I will work, as I indicated to y'all Thursday, with our traffic services director and try to address that in as a responsible way as we can that would include a stop sign. Are there any other communications, Ms. Muns?
No, sir. We skip the recent questions until you are here.
All right. Mr. Rogers, I understand as chairman of our National Night Out Committee, I think we'll change the name of that. Do you want to come to the microphone, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not too good at speeches. I'm gonna be reading off the letter. I put it in the words that I wanted to say. I am happy to be here tonight and something on the positive note is the award that we've won for National Night Out. Dear Mayor Hayes, council members and citizens of North Little Rock, to the audience here tonight and to the viewers at home, I'm David Rogers, chairman of the North Little Rock National Night Out Committee, now referred to as North Little Rock Town Watch, which is a participant in a national anti-crime organization that promotes intense community participation and activities in fighting crime in our neighborhoods all across the nation. I'm here tonight to reveal the results of North Little Rock's participation in this year's National Night Out program, which is the second year that we have been involved with this program. Last year, nineteen ninety-three, was North Little Rock's first year of participation and we came away with a coveted Rookie of the Year Award for all newcomer city contestants, one of ten. This was a high honor because only ten newcomer cities nationwide were chosen for this prestigious Rookie of the Year Award. For this year's nineteen ninety-four participation in the National Night Out program, we entered into contest category number three, which includes cities with populations of thirty-thousand to a hundred thousand in size. Out of a hundred and twenty-nine cities like ours who entered into this contest category, there were only twenty-eight winners. I would like to proudly share the news to all of you now that our great city of North Little Rock was indeed among those twenty-eight contest winners, but that's not all. At this time, it is my distinct pleasure and honor as chairman of the North Little Rock Town Watch Committee to announce to you, Mayor Hayes, to you, the city council members, and to all of those here in the audience and the viewers at home watching tonight's meeting, that our great city of North Little Rock was awarded in this contest category as ranking number seventeen best out of the entire nation. As chairman of this committee, I am humbly compelled to say that this wonderful honor and award could not have been won without the participation and the cooperation displayed by all of the distinct neighborhoods. The sense of enthusiastic brotherhood, fellowship and community that was shared during and in preparation for the events by the neighborhoods was inspiring, extraordinary and awesome safe to say the very least. I want to encourage all of those participating neighborhoods and all of those caring folks that could not get involved this year to join us next year for the twelfth annual National Night Out program, which is going to be starting to be planned the first of next year. I also want to extend my deepest gratitude and appreciation to legions of volunteers and to the committee members with whom I share the honor of planning the National Night Out program in making this year's a fairer triumph, a success that it was. I would like to close at this time by presenting our mayor, Patrick Henry Hayes, with this plaque in recognition of North Little Rock's award-winning participation in the National Night Out program.
David, on behalf of you and your committee, which now is a permanent institution of our city, I want to thank you and thank you and the rest of your committee members for all the work that you've done. It goes to show that with the cooperation of all of our citizens, North Little Rock can shine as it certainly as well deserved to shine. We appreciate it once again and look forward to number seventeen...number sixteen or better next year.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now, Ms. Muns, can we go to old business?
There was a lady, Mrs. Letha Rounds, mayor...
Okay.
...who asked for a few moments for her presentation, advocates and relatives for kids.
All right. Without objection, Ms. Rounds?
Pardon me?
Said, without objection from the council, the floor is yours.
Thank you. First, I would like to say good evening and thanks for letting you...letting me come and present my program to you. I came up with this idea because I have had to take so many of my grandchildren in my home at different times for different reasons. And most times, we try to get assistance from the state to help us with our grandchildren. We are denied assistance. And if they take our children and put them in foster homes, they are supported. So I have a fourteen-year-old grandson with me now that was in alternative school. He was suspended...well, he was expelled from alternative school and sent to the streets. So I took this child in. I spent three months trying to get him accepted in some programs and he hadn't committed a crime, so he was not accepted in any program. So I woke up one morning and I was mad and I decided that I needed to do something to get the politicians aware about those of us that are trying to help raise our children and keep them out of the street because now I feel that we are part of the crime prevention program. I already have my program organized. I have my bylaws. I have my articles. All of this was done in Little Rock. So I'm coming now to North Little Rock to see what kind of support can I get from North Little Rock. My plans are to try to set up a place in Little Rock and in North Little Rock that will be available to parents...surrogate parents when they have to take these children in. I don't know how many grandparents are in this building and it looks like if there's any grandparents in here, you all probably don't have the problem that we're having, right? But if you want to know anything about the problems we're having, I can tell you. So I'm asking, how do I get some assistance from North Little Rock?
I'm...I'll be happy to visit with you afterwards. I am, at this point, not aware of anything that the city might be able to do, but I'll certainly explore, you know, with you any options that may be there.
Well, I would like to say that I've been working with New Future and Little Rock and I have filed for a 501(c)(3) grant and they are saying that the money may not be allowed to come to North Little Rock. I live in North Little Rock and I have organized the program. So I just wanted to know what steps do I need to take to get something going in North Little Rock since I'm a citizen of North Little Rock? And I have about three hundred members on my list now and I haven't gone public yet.
Did you visit with Mr. Baxter and get a few more details of what you're talking about and to see if there's anything that we might be able to do in addressing that? And I'll certainly be happy to visit with you after this meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Now I think we can go into our regular agenda.
All right.
Anything else, Ms. Muns?
No, sir, that is all. And we go to the old business.
Uh-huh.
No old resolutions, so we would go to the old ordinances. I believe it's O-9483.
All right, we'll hold that, please.
All right. And O-9484.
Hold that for two minutes, ma'am.
All right, sir. So we go back to new business, which would be resolutions.
I'll be fine.
R-94212, Alderman Witcher.
Please call it, please.
This is a resolution authorizing the Community Development Agency to proceed with a housing assistance grant for Elsa Cortez, 4520 Gum Street, Ward Four.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
On the motion, Gibson?
Yes.
McGloughlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
R-94213, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
A resolution accepting the bid of Baird, Kurtz and Dobson to provide auditing services for the electric and utilities accounting funds for the year nineteen ninety-four and Charles Cole Company to provide auditing services for the general accounting fund for the year nineteen ninety-four. Resolution.
Move for the adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
On the motion, Gibson?
Yes.
McGloughlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
R-94214, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
This is a resolution authorizing purchase of two DeBaggitt Lee machines from Superior Tech for the sum of thirty-one thousand.
For adoption?
Second.
On the motion?
On the motion, Gibson?
Yes.
McGloughlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
R-94215, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing repair of the street pavement.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
McGloughlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
R-94216, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
A resolution appointing Carl Duncan to the unexpired term of Mark Holtz on the North Little Rock Advertising and Promotion Commission.
Move for adoption.
On the motion?
Gibson?
Yes.
McGloughlin?
Yes.
Skoggins?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Vestal?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
And Spinelli?
Yes.
R-94216, Mayor Hayes?
Please call it.
A resolution approving the consolidated plan and this is dated November fourteenth, nineteen ninety-four, for the city of North Little Rock included in the nineteen ninety-five CDBT projects and budgets.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Discussion? Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to discuss it just a moment and I'm not gonna repeat my speeches I usually make, but I'm still concerned over the dividing these monies and the manner in which we're doing. And I appreciate the fact that Charlie Baxter's done a good job and I know he's tried to do a job that would satisfy all of us and that's impossible. But I felt that on page sixteen of this...on the reports that we have under this consolidated plan, we find there that these minority concentrations, the low and moderate income families are certainly in our areas in this Census Track twenty-sixth and twenty-eighth and thirty-eighth, in those areas. And I also feel that in these areas, if the city was just given a sum of money, I could understand how you divided four ways. This wasn't given to us just as a...with no strange attached. It has a strange attached and it says that it's the primary purpose of...for low and hard-income families and that's the reason that I have always objected to trying to divide it up into the four wards and four equal parts because our needs are...our four wards are not equal in need. So that's the reason. But I want to compliment Charlie for the job he's done. He's tried his best to do a plan that would satisfy each of us. And I feel that this plan will be adopted, but I can't go for it. But I do not want to try to amend it because Charlie's under a deadline now to get this in and so I wanted to make that known now.
Alderman Spinelli?
I agree somewhat with Olin's comments. I realize that his ward has probably more problems than the other three wards. However, I think one reason that I personally and I assume Mr. Witcher fought very hard to get our share of the money this year is because this little triangle down in Levy is probably one of the few areas in the fourth ward that really has not had much attention in twenty years. And it started at a transition period. I think that right now, with a little bit of money spent in that particular area, it can still be a real nice neighborhood for those folks to live in and I just feel like that if we don't do it now, it's going to continue to slide and go downhill to where it may be to the point where there's not enough money to restore it. So I hope that you'll understand that maybe after one or two years, it won't be necessary for the fourth ward to have any of that money and if any, very little.
Alderman Witcher?
You know, based upon looking at what needs to be done specifically in the fourth ward area, you know, I would think that probably over a four- to six-year period, if we had funding at various levels, that we could accomplish a lot of what needs to be accomplished and if we could supplement it with other funds over the next couple of years.
Of course, my response is our area's needed for years and we have a large area that needed the same thing that you have a small area that needs. So our area is large and it needs the funds since it was earmarked for low and moderate income families and that's the reason that I was concerned about dividing it four ways.
Of course, as Alderman Spinelli pointed out, you know, we have an opportunity to draw the line in the sand in this particular area and to change this area. You know, the folks in that area are organizing, the folks in that area are interested, the folks in that area want to...they don't...you know, they want to help, they want to change the area themselves and they're not asking a great deal from us. All they need is some help. And I think with that attitude, that they can go a long way towards changing their area and to rehabilitating their area. And in this particular case, again, as Alderman Spinelli pointed out, you know, we have that opportunity to take a good working-class neighborhood and bring it back to its golden years again.
Any other comments? Alderman Gibson?
I guess if you go to the top of page sixteen though and you...we're talking about low-income concentration, you'll notice that Census Track number thirty, which is much within our ward in Ward One, hits in the top three as far as low-income concentration and that's what we're talking about. I think the real key issue is that we have a section of money that's been given to us to treat the problems in low-income neighborhoods and have we met that goal as part of this? And I think that answer is yes.
Any other comments? Ms. Muns, do we have a motion?
Yes, we have.
And a second?
Yes, we have.
Let me just make one comment. Part of the reason I was...or the reason I was late today is I was with mayors from all over this country assessing what the new field might be in Washington and one of the concerns that was raised was the continued funding of community development block grant levels with the congressional changes it's been. So I think that while we...you know, while I think all of us unanimously, both here, I think, and certainly at the meeting that I attended, are supportive of community development block grants, we all need to remain vigilant in what is an ever-changing atmosphere in Washington and certainly voice our support for this program, I think, is one of the best that we've teamed up with in the federal... block grants, we all need to remain vigilant in what is an ever-changing atmosphere in Washington, and certainly voice our support for this program, I think, is one of the best that we've teamed up with in the federal government. I want to compliment Mr. Baxter. He is certainly a magician in trying to weigh the competing interests of the four wards, and his talents once again have shown through, maybe not as adequately as we all would like in terms of having enough funding to do all of what we want, but certainly in trying to split the pie in a way that while not pleasing everyone, certainly gives everyone something to look forward to. With that, Ms. Muns, on the motion?
On the motion, Gibson.
Yes.
McGloughlin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
No.
Thomas.
No.
Gaines.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
R-94218, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is a resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located in certain sections of the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for these property owners to abate these nuisances and for other purposes.
Move for the adoption.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
McGloughlin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
R-94219, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is a condemnation resolution and declares certain buildings, houses, and other structures located in various sections of the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemn said structures and provide a period of time for the property owners to abate these nuisances. Resolution.
Move for adoption.
Second.
I did talk to Ms. Britt about the Alice Club, and she informed me, if my recollection's right, that the structure is sound, that it is not in a position that fits the laws that we have that currently would allow destruction. So unless I'm mistaken, and Mr. Morley, because in reference to your question, I did inquire hers, and that's the information I got. If you could visit, if you could visit Mr. Morley with Ms. Britt and confirm that, then I will not wait until next council meeting to relay that conversation to you. But in part, the one I did get is that it's sound enough to where we can't condemn it. Alderman Witcher?
May I remind you that we have condemned the structure before because it is a nuisance, a public nuisance to the community, and as you do your research, Mr. City Attorney, would you also consider that?
I don't think that's, is it an active operation? Do you know if it's an?
Well, Mayor, it's just according to what day you're down there, whether it's active or not. I mean, the one other solution we have is condemn it for city use and let our police use it in the daytime for what it's used for most of the time in night, and that's an indoor shooting range.
On the motion, Ms. Muns?
It should be condemned.
They're not licensed. Gibson.
Yes.
McGloughlin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
That's all the resolution, sir.
Mayor, that is in Ward One, isn't it? No. I must remind you, it is in Ward Two, and if it were in Ward One, I would already be down there with signs, nailing them up myself.
Actually, it is in Ward Two. If I remember correctly, the, I thought, I think Thirteenth Street is the, or it is in Ward Two. Thirteenth Street, everything on the south side of that is Ward Two.
You don't own that, do you, old?
No.
Go to ordinances, Ms. Muns.
O-9487, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance electing coverage for eligible members of the North Little Rock Fireman's Pension and Relief Fund under the law fee and authorizing the chief administrative officer to enter into an agreement with law fee. First reading.
Move, suspend rules, place the ordinance on second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
McGloughlin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
In ordinance electing coverage for eligible members of the North Little Rock Fireman's Pension and Relief Fund under law fee and authorizing the chief administrative officer to enter into an agreement with law fee. Second reading.
Please suspend rules, place it on its third reading.
Second.
On the motion?
On the motion, Gibson.
Yes.
McGloughlin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson.
Yes.
McGloughlin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
O-9488, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it, Ms. Muns.
In ordinance electing coverage for eligible members of the North Little Rock Police Pension and Relief Fund under law fee and authorizing the chief administrative officer to enter into an agreement with law fee. First reading.
Move, suspend rules, place the ordinance on second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
McGloughlin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
In ordinance electing coverage for eligible members of the North Little Rock Police Pension and Relief Fund under law fee and authorizing the chief administrative officer to enter into an agreement with law fee. Second reading.
Move, suspend rules, place it on its third reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
McGloughlin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
On the emergency, Gibson.
Yes.
McGloughlin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Muns. I'd like to, for both those at home and those members of both our police and fire departments who were hired prior to nineteen eighty-three, I think we all realize that this has been a goal of this city for a long time. No small measure due to the citizens as well as the explanation by the members of both of your organizations, the police and fire, that resulted in a favorable vote some several months ago in raising our mileage from six tenths to one mil. This certainly, from a financial standpoint, has given this city council the ability to take this step, and while it's not a done deal yet, it's simply lacking some of the administrative work before we can implement that. I know it will go a long way in bringing benefits to particularly widows who have long gone without the assistance that they rightly deserve and that their husbands worked so long for. So I can certainly tell you that I think I know on behalf of this mayor, as well as this city council, but in no small measures, I mentioned, to your own efforts and the citizens' vote, this step was taken. So we appreciate it, we all work together, and it's a happy day for all of us. Thank you very much. Next item, Ms. Muns.
O-9489, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance authorizing the issuance of electric system revenue bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed three million forty-nine thousand four hundred to provide permanent financing for acquisition and installation of the North Little Rock communication system and for construction and renovation of facilities to house such system, authorizing a trust indenture securing the bonds, authorizing a private placement agreement, authorizing a pledge of revenues securing the bonds, and authorizing and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto. First reading.
Please suspend the rules and place it on its second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
McGloughlin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
In ordinance authorizing the issuing of electric system revenue bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed three million forty-nine thousand four hundred dollars to provide permanent finance for acquisition and installation of the North Little Rock communication system and for construction and renovation of facilities to house such system, authorizing a trust indenture securing the bonds, authorizing a private placement agreement, authorizing a pledge of revenues securing the bonds, authorizing prescribing other matters pertaining thereto. Second reading.
Move, suspend rules, place it on its third reading.
Second.
On the motion?
On the motion, Gibson.
Yes.
McGloughlin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
On your emergency, Gibson.
Yes.
McGloughlin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
On your emergency, Gibson.
Yes.
McGloughlin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
O-9490, Alderman Thomas.
Call it, please.
In ordinance accepting the dedication of McNeil Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, accepting maintenance responsibility for said road. First reading.
Move, suspend rules, place it on its second reading.
Second.
On the motion?
Gibson.
Yes.
McGloughlin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
In ordinance accepting the dedication of McNeil Drive in the city of North Little Rock, accepting maintenance responsibility for said road. Second reading.
Please suspend rules, place it on its third reading.
Second.
On the motion?
On the motion, Gibson.
Yes.
McGloughlin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
On your emergency, Gibson.
Yes.
McGloughlin.
Yes.
Skoggins.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Gaines.
Yes.
Vestal.
Yes.
Witcher.
Yes.
And Spinelli.
Yes.
Gentlemen, that is all of the legislation.
Alderman Vestal?
Yes, I would like to wish someone out in the television viewing audience a very happy fourteenth anniversary. Thank you. Mayor, as you know, some months back, we had a gun buyback program in the city in North Little Rock, and I might add, all that money was donated, there was no tax dollars used, but we did have about six thousand dollars left, and Chief Nolan called me several weeks ago and asked me what we should do with it, and I said, I assume we should return ago and asked me what we should do with it, and I said, I assume we should return it. He called the Kroger officials, they very graciously donated that money to the city of North Little Rock to be used at our discretion. Chief, would you go over the mic and just tell briefly what we did? I'm real proud of Kroger and company and the other folks that donated that money, and I think that it was definitely a positive image for our police department.
We had the certificates, the $25 certificates, and we utilized those certificates in low-income areas. What we did was use our neighborhood stations, we also used the housing project stations that we had. We went to churches, we went to the housing project, the housing authority, we got names of families, and we distributed those certificates to those families. And we gave at least $50 to each family. We think that will help make that, this upcoming week, a very good Thanksgiving for quite a few families in the city of North Little Rock.
Thank you very much, Chief. We saw clips of that on television and your department, as well as Alvin Spinelli's idea certainly was not only something we're proud of, but something that those citizens, I think, very much enjoyed. We're in public comments section, the microphone's open. Motion, we adjourn?
Never mind, never mind, I'm sorry. I didn't see you coming.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Mayor Hayes, General of the Council, I'm Bill Maddox. I have just run unsuccessfully for Alvin, and I'm going to make you one promise: I'll never again run in a race when the incumbent is running and determined to stay there, and there's somebody else running that's equally determined to beat him. This third man out is very tiring. I'd like to just make a few comments on the race there. I got into this race because I didn't feel like I was being represented very well in politics in general, from president on down, and I apologize for Murray. I'm sure he took all of this very personal, but there was nothing personal intended. I'm just sick and tired of the kind of politics that we have representing us, and I was determined to do something about it. I was never supported by any group, no one gave me any money that was going to want anything in return, and I wouldn't have had it any other way. My finance chairman had strict orders, if anything came in that looked fishy, it looked like there might be a string attached, just send it back. I'll end up spending about $2,500. My opponents will end up spending, I don't know, fifteen, twenty-five, thirty thousand together. I'm not going to spend $10,000 for additional 300 votes. If I can't get them, by just getting out there and letting people know what I am, what I'm all about, I will not run again. But I think I can do it, and so I'm announcing now I will be running in two years. Assuming I can get Mr. Spinelli to retire. I would like to say one thing on behalf of Mayor Hayes. I'd like to defend your right to send that letter. The letter did not offend me. Pat was very open with me. He told me, the first meeting we had, I figured I'd just be there 15 minutes, we spent about an hour and a half together. I assured him I could work with him to make North Little Rock a better city, and he told me he appreciated, but that he needed Murray Witcher to help him do whatever he wanted to do. And so I respect him for being open and honest with me from the front end. And while we're on this subject, a mentor and a good friend of yours just tried the same thing. President Clinton spent hundreds of thousands of dollars the last eight days of the campaign, running here and there, trying to tell the American people who he had to have to complete his agenda, and he met with total rejection. I don't think anyone that he visited with or spoke for in that last eight days was elected. Personally, I think it was a great day for America. I'm sorry that the state of Arkansas lags so far behind in that category as the other. I really believe, from the bottom of my heart, and this may cost me some friends, and I hope not, let me make one thing perfectly clear: After my Lord, my family, my friends are the most important thing I've got, and I hate the idea of even losing one over politics or anything else. And I hope if any one of my friends disagrees with me very strongly, that they will have the guts to come to me and tell me that, rather than tell everybody in the country, because that's the way it ought to be done. I got into this race because I thought we desperately needed change, and Mayor Hayes' letter, while I agree with his right to do it, Mayor, I view that as an attempt of yours to grab absolute power over what happened in this city, and I resent that, and I will do everything I can to fight it. Absolute power breeds a lot of things: arrogance, contempt, both of which I dislike immensely, more than I can, I'll even try to tell you here. Because I have talked to dozens of my supporters who, for whatever reason, supported me, I hope it wasn't because I was just another pretty face in the race, I hope it was because they know that I would treat them the same yesterday, today, and tomorrow, that I would treat them fairly, that I wanted to take the pettiness out of politics and take the politics out of serving the people of North Little Rock.